Could stand for the pledge? We're good, okay. Okay, thank you for that. We're going to move on to adopting the agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Madam President?
Gina?
I move that tonight's agenda be adopted as printed and placed on file.
Thank you, is there support?
Support.
Ooh, I think I heard Dee. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries, thank you. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Is there any board member who would like a consent agenda item to be removed and acted on separately? Seeing none, can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Madam President?
Megan?
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Thank you, is there support?
Support.
Thanks, Amy. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries, thank you. We've reached our first public commentary for agenda items only. Is there any public commentary at this moment? Seeing no one rushing to the podium, we'll move on to board correspondence. And I know Griffin is excused tonight, but Dr. Schultz, do you have, are you aware of any correspondence?
I believe the board was included on an email that I received from a parent regarding the student issue. I think that happened this week. That was the only one, I responded on behalf of the board.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to our Board of Education reports and Bedford Township Government, Amy Bissell.
Nothing new to report. Oh, actually Carl has a report for me.
Just that the township board did approve the three-way partnership that last week for the additional two SROs. So I wanted to thank the board, they were unanimous in their support. That will require, that means that we will all be sharing the cost of thirty-three point three, or point three percent for the additional two SROs, which we're hoping to interview for in the next week to ten days. So we are moving, moving quickly.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to our Bedford Township Park Board, that's Griffin. Is there anything that you have, Dr. Schultz?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay. The Michigan Association of School Boards, Megan?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Policy Committee?
Sitting on the same policies, we'll be having a, we are losing two members of the team, so we'll have a new committee that will form in the new year. So I think we should wrap up our, our two brief changes at that time.
Okay, thank you. And the Monroe County Association of Board of Education, Amy?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. And we do have our student representative here with us today, Sophia Johnson. Hi Sophia, thanks for coming.
Sophia, you might want to check the mic to make sure that it's on.
Nope.
You just have to push the button on the top of it.
Hello?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hello, two weeks ago, we had the Stafford Students Basketball Game, where the staff won. And currently, we are doing a food drive that ends tomorrow, and a door decorating contest throughout the school. That ends the sixteenth.
Awesome. Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to our superintendent's report, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Schultz.
Yes, good evening. Kind of a bittersweet first component here for me. We'd like to recognize two of our outgoing Board of Education members, Ms. Diana D. Janney and Ms. Gina Keith. They will be, this will be their last meeting tonight. I can't tell you from my standpoint, having seven bosses, losing two of them is, is difficult, especially two that I, I truly enjoy working with. I know that our board has talked about this many times, how cohesive the board is, and how hard you each work to understand the, you know, the number of nuances that go into running a fifty-six million dollar budget and educating over, you know, four thousand students. But the work that you've put in on my end, and the pleasure that I've had working with the two of you is immense. So I know the rest of the board would like to say a few things, but I, I do have something on behalf of the administration, central team, and the board members for each of you. So I'm going to bring these over to you.
It's just a collection of the things you didn't do before you left, yeah.
Your final project, don't worry about it, it's fine.
Wow. My goodness, thank you so much.
Thanks guys, and you go.
And I'll just remind the, the community what it takes to be a board member. These individuals get paid very, very little. I don't know why anybody would want to be a board member. You have to do a lot of research, you do a lot of reading, the things that I share with you. You get stopped in the community when you're out at the store. Many times it can be a thankless job, especially like you two have gone through the COVID pandemic, the number of changes, bond meetings. It's a, it's a difficult position that most people don't understand exactly what goes into it. But having, having the two of you been here, it's made my job significantly easier, and I know that I'll miss you. I know Mr. Janney in the audience will enjoy having his wife back. Gina, I know your husband will look forward to you being home on, on Thursday evenings and events, but I hope you don't become strangers. We love seeing you around the district, you've done so much for our staff and our kids. I know I miss you.
Thank you, Dr. Schultz. So before I say anything, I'll just turn it over, see if there are any other board members who have anything that they would like to say. Go ahead.
I'll just thank you both for your service. You really have contributed to cohesive board, and it's been great to work with you.
Thanks, Megan.
I'll just say, I've said a lot to Gina already, I'm not going to repeat all that. But I want to say to Dee, you were the most welcoming person to me when I joined the board, and always tried to make me feel like I had a place, and like I knew what I was doing even when I didn't. And I, it really meant a lot to me, and I appreciate it.
Okay, and sorry, I didn't mean to exclude the cabinet if you all have anything to say to it. I know I specifically said board members, okay. So while, if you all want to afterwards, I just wanted to say a couple of things because as the, I'll start with Gina, in that Gina, thank you again for your service, and appreciate your perspective on this board, your educational background that has lent itself tremendously to the success of the work that we've done here in your tenure. Beyond that, I know you were such a fantastic, still will continue to be advocate for our, our staff and our leadership teams, as well as our very youngest at-risk kiddos. So I appreciate you in many ways, and will miss you being on this board. Again, I echo what Dr. Schultz says, in that I hope you're not a stranger to the board. I know we still have you around the district for a long time, because you have children still in the district. So thank you, and I appreciate you. And Dee, you know, Tim, I did try to talk her into running several times and not retiring. I had Todd fooled for forty seconds when I said, "Your mom's running again." He's like, "There is no way." But it wasn't for a lack of trying. And Dee, I certainly, as the, as the second longest-tenured board member, in many of the things that you and I have been through, from, you know, serving bacon to, to at odds around budgeted bond items, I think it's such incredible that you gave us so much of your time and your effort, and I know it was important to you to serve the community. And when I look back through our records and the work we have done, it's tremendous. And so thank you for all the time you gave, took away from your family. And I, I will miss your kindness. And for any of you guys who don't know, I'm assuming this is Dee's and not Gina's, every holiday, it doesn't matter, she always brings us a goodie bag or a box or something. And I don't know which one of you are taking that tradition over, but it is expected. It, it is, I mean Dee's so selfless in her giving, and she has done tremendous things behind the scenes for our staff, and this last one here for the Christmas holiday season, providing stockings for our food service worker. So it is not unlike her to just go and do things like that. Or when my children were in sports giving, you know, I'd come in selling football tickets, you name it, whatever it was, she's like, "Here's a hundred dollars, here's two hundred dollars. Oh, you need a snow blower, let me give you a snow blower for fundraiser we had for Jonathan Scout Scholarship." So the giving is endless. So again, Dee, I know you won't be a stranger, and I know you told me I can call you whenever I want, and that you will be a, a great advocate. So thank you Dee, I appreciate it, appreciate your time. And I don't know, do you guys, would you, do you guys want to address, or you want to save it for the end?
I just want to, it's been an honor, it's been an honor to serve on this board.
Turn your microphone on one last time.
No, no. They can hear me, across me, I got a lot of trouble. It, it's been an honor, it's been a long road, like Lisa said, we've gone from down here, up here. We're in very, very good hands, this community is in very good hands. The leadership and the cabinet, and all the workers, all of our workers are so dedicated teachers. It, it's truly a pleasure. But I'm old and I'm done. And I thank everybody, thank you all very much, it's been an honor.
Gina, can't wait to start helping you with Gina.
Well, thank you for the recognition and the kind words. Everybody has a card from me with just a little message from me, and just a token of my appreciation for being such fantastic coworkers.
Awesome, thanks Dee, thanks Gina. All right, that's not the last word you'll hear for them, because we have more at the end of public commentary. So we'll go ahead and move on now to, I guess, two additional items from Dr. Schultz.
Yes, my second item this evening is just a review of the proposed 2025-26 Board of Ed meeting schedule. And we've listed the dates, continuing with the pattern of not having two meetings per month, based, except based on need. We did take the Committee of the Holes off of this. Last year, we only met one time for a Committee of the Hole outside of the budget meeting, it was in June. So this, this proposed calendar does reflect that same pattern. If there's any, take a look at it, if there's any questions or thoughts, it's not, it's not set in stone right now, we can change it. We will have to approve this in January after the officers' meeting, along with the oath and, you know, busy work that we have to complete. But this would be, this would be the, you know, based on what we did this year, taking the, taking the last, or I'm sorry, the first Thursday of every month for the, for the meeting. So take a look, let me know if there's any questions or thoughts, and, and we can, we can adjust it and bring it back in the January meeting.
Okay, thank you, and your last one?
My third one is consideration to approve the District Memorandum of Understanding. This is a, a gift for our hard-working staff members and our, our team here at Bedford Public Schools. Last year, as a district, we were able to give back a small two-hundred-dollar holiday stipend for all staff members. This year, based on our budget and where we are at, we, we were able to allocate a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar per staff member holiday bonus that would come in the, on their check on December twentieth. I did actually send this out in a holiday card to all of our staff members, that they should have received it today. And I can't count the number of emails I received this afternoon thanking the board and the staff, on behalf of the staff for everything we do for them. This is not the norm. I could tell you, I don't know of another district anywhere in this region that is doing this for their staff at holiday time. And again, the reason we can do this is because, as you sat through our audit last time, we are, we are very sound. We continue to make decisions that is, that is going to keep us in the right direction moving forward. But these one-time givebacks are, I, I think are a really nice touch on behalf of the board for our hard-working staff members. It's not a lot, I wish it was ten thousand, but I think every staff member is truly appreciative of it. This is something that most districts don't do, it's what makes, it's what makes our district different than everyone else's. It's why we keep our staff, these little tokens and gestures we've been able to do for the last several years. So the memorandum is just for the EA members, all the bargaining groups had to sign off on it. It, it's weird that we have to get permission to give them additional money, but we do. Bargaining, bargain contracts are such that you don't pay individuals less or more than they're signed up to do. So this makes it so that it's not binding, it's not a, it's not a perpetual thing, it's a one-time thing. And they were very appreciative, our, our new Uniserv director was in awe when I asked him to sign these. So if we could approve that tonight, I would be appreciative, since I've already told them they're going to get it, and that would be great. Kind of puts you under the gun here, don't I?
Oh, Madam President?
Yeah, so I, I asked that we approved that this evening, so Chrissy can, can make that happen for them on the twentieth.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion for the consideration to approve the District Memorandum of Understanding?
I move that the Board of Education approves the signed memorandum of understanding by district employee groups for a one-time staff payment as recommended.
Thank you, is there support?
Support.
Thanks, Megan. Any discussion? I'll just-
It's so well deserved. It's so, I, it's exciting that we can do this. God bless, I'm, I'm excited.
Wonderful.
Bye Gina.
Definitely, thank you to all of our teachers. We, yeah, wish we could, wish we could give them more. Carl knows I wanted to give them.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Some of you wanted me to get fired, I think.
Some of us are on our way out, it doesn't matter.
Just to reiterate, this will go to any district employee that Bedford pays directly, or through Edge of Staff. So it, it truly covers anyone who is receiving a normal weekly check. So if you're a coach, it only gets paid once or twice a year, you would not be included in this if that's all you do. But if you receive a, a normal check, whether you're a full-time building sub, and you receive a weekly, or bi-weekly check, or you are, as long as you're on payroll for this upcoming pay, you will receive that. So anyone newly hired would also receive that as long as they were on schedule for pay on the twentieth. So we try to make it as clear-cut as possible. Individuals that can't unfortunately receive the benefits of this are ISD employees. We have so many ISD employees that work within our district as part of our team, but we do not pay them directly. They are employees of the ISD, I can't in any way pay them through our payroll. So it doesn't include those individuals, but as a recognition, those individuals work just as hard. I know the ISD does a number of things for them as well, but we did give them a nice card. But I just, those are the only group members that could not be included in this, to try to be across the board.
Okay, go ahead, Amy.
Carl, could you share for the public the communication process that you had? Just when you joke and say, "Hey, can you approve this because I already did it?" The public might want to know really what went on behind the scenes there.
Sure, so in my role, my, anytime that there is something that is coming up, I have the ability to contact individual board members one at a time, and, and give them my thoughts on a topic. I, I give them information, they, they reach out to me, I give them information. This is something we did last year, and however, sometimes because of the way the board meeting schedule falls, it's not always an opportunity to meet in open session. So in order to avoid any conflicts with the Open Meetings Act, they allow superintendents and administrators to work closely with individual board members one at a time to, to do this. So because we did this last year, it was a pretty easy sell to our individual members. I was able to reach out and, and go over the budget, this is what we can afford, I think this would be a great idea. I was given the, the initiative, go ahead to move forward with it, and to be able to put on tonight's agenda. But I had to get it out in order to get the payroll department starting to work on the list and generate it. So these things don't happen overnight, as Chrissy will tell you, it, we start payroll weeks in advance. So it was a necessity to, to facilitate this on an individual basis before we could talk about it tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Go ahead.
Thank you so much, Dr. Schultz, for making this happen for our staff who so absolutely deserve it. And thank you to Chrissy and your team for doing the work to make it happen.
Well said.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no other comments, we will go ahead, this is a roll call vote, Amy Bissell?
Yes.
Amy Drehorst?
Yes.
Dee?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Griffin is excused, the chair votes yes, and the motion carries, thank you. We'll move on to our personnel items, Dr. Schultz, will you cover?
I, I will be. Several items for Alex this evening. Unfortunately, Mark and Alex were unable to make it this evening, they were at a conference on a district, and so I will cover for them. Alex's first item for personnel is to consideration to approve the Bedford Transportation Association, or the BTA Master Agreement. As we've done several times this year already, Alex has met and worked with the bargaining groups, individual bargaining groups to, to settle contract agreements. We had, I believe, five that were open this year out of our nine, and Alex did another great job working with the, working with the group. We've kind of established a pattern bargaining approach in the district, and just like we have since, every year since I've been here, they will, everyone has gotten a raise on every contract. So this is a new agreement that will be, that was approved yesterday by the group. I overwhelmingly approved, it was another good, another good agreement. We were able to get, it was not a wholesale change, but we were able to get a couple of things we wanted. They were able to get a few things, a three percent raise for all, all sections of the group. So I think everyone's in a, in a great place, and I believe that this will carry us for the next, I think it's a two-year agreement? Is that correct, another, next two years?
June of twenty-seventh.
So June of the, June of twenty-seventh. So again, Alex did a great job working with the group, they had, they had some great leaders in there, and worked with the Uniserv director, it was able to get done, and in pretty decent fashion, actually. Did not take months of drawn-out communication, I think several meetings, and they were able to knock it out. So I highly recommend it, I think it's a great contract for our group, and I know they're eager to start, start moving forward with it. It's technically a two-and-a-half-year agreement because it, because it, you know, it ended in December, so we wanted to take it to the, to the twenty-seventh year.
Okay, thank you, can I get a motion?
Madam President?
Gina?
I move that the Board of Education approve the Bedford Transportation Association Master Agreement as recommended.
Thank you, is there support?
Support.
I think I heard Amy Drehorst. Any discussion on this item? I, I would just, yeah, yeah, thank you, I know, appreciate the, the negotiations it took to get to this. Obviously, whenever we have an opportunity to get a really positive contract completed, it's always a great day in the district. I'll just mention that beyond just the wage increase, longevity, and perfect attendance, so there are some other items within the contract that I think are really great opportunities for our staff.
This agreement, once again, like our other groups, brings our, our group to the highest level in the county. So our, our team is now the highest paid in the county across each section, each job description.
And we all know they deserve that, for sure. Okay, if there are no other comments, this is a roll call vote, Amy Bissell?
Yes.
Amy Drehorst?
Yes.
Dee?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Griffin is excused, the chair votes yes, and the motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. My next item is consideration to acknowledge BEA Michigan tenure acquired. And this, again, for individuals who are not familiar with tenure, Michigan tenure law allows educators who serve a set amount of time, now it's five years, it used to be four years. Once they successfully complete that term, they acquire tenure, which is a position that education, whether it's post-secondary or K-12 strive to, strive to reach. It means that they're a full teacher, not on probation, and they get to move forward with full contractual rights. And this one is for Ms. Julie Mayolo, and I'd like to have that recognized this evening.
All right, thank you very much. Can I get a motion for the consideration to acknowledge the BEA Michigan tenure acquired?
Madam President?
Amy?
I move that the Board of Education acknowledge BEA Michigan tenure required by Julie Mayolo as recommended.
Thank you, is there support?
Support.
Thanks, Megan. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries, thank you. And we have one last item.
One last item, and speaking of Transportation Department, as you are well aware, we, we have a new opening. Carrie Dupree is retiring, and the Director of Transportation position is a very difficult one to fill, much like most roles in transportation these days. And the district posted, we've had several interviews, using a panel for both interviews, and I think we are very lucky to have attracted a number of very qualified candidates. And the district offered the position to Ms. PJ Kotke. And PJ, who's in the audience this evening with her husband, I'm assuming, and she is coming to us from Summerfield Schools, where she served as their Director of Transportation and Driver. So much bigger district, but similar role, and she's been here now for a couple of weeks, and by all accounts, doing an outstanding job. I would love to have the board approve her contract this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Can I get a motion for the consideration to approve the new Director of Transportation contract?
Madam President?
Megan?
I move that the Board of Education approve the new Director of Transportation contract for Phyllis Kotke as recommended.
Thank you, is there support?
Support.
Amy? Dee? Any discussion? Welcome.
Welcome, very much.
Typically, you have to do a song and dance for at least five minutes when you're hired. Directors are ten, but I'll let you slide this time.
So it'll be forever.
As we mentioned, with our, our Transportation Association contract, tough job. And certainly, when the weather is like this and things, I think, I appreciate so much the work that you, you do and have ahead of you, so thank you for coming. All right, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries, thank you. Sure, we, we just, we always offer for you to come up and shake hands with the board, if you would mind. We won't make you sing and dance, just shake our hands. Thank you, looking forward to your work.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Welcome.
And thanks for coming to your husband, appreciate it. All right, we are at our second public commentary. This is for any items, any public commentary. Again, no one rushing to the podium, we'll move on to our announcements, and we will start with our administrator in the audience.
Hello, I'm Deanna Klein, the principal at Monroe Road Elementary. I wanted to thank, first of all, Dr. Schultz and the board for the holiday gift, on behalf of all of the staff. It was, I forgot, it happened last year, and I was equally as excited and grateful this year. So I, I know everybody else is too, so thank you so much. Also, wanted to congratulate and thank Gina and Dee for their service for all of these years. You've been amazing, and we all very much appreciate you, and wish you well in your board retirement. I have a lot of great information of things that have been going on in all of the different schools. At Monroe Road Elementary, we have just finished our fundraiser distribution yesterday. We raised the most money that we've raised in quite a few years, we sold over forty-eight thousand dollars in products. So that was a great fundraiser for our school. The PTO is currently in the middle of spoiling us, the, the staff, they've done one thing each week for about five weeks. We've, we had a dip day, cookies, a gift, and a breakfast will be catered next week. So we are very grateful for our PTO. Our second grade has their holiday concert next Wednesday at six-thirty, so if you'd like to come and check that out, our new music teacher, Mr. Dar, will be leading that, just as he led our- Our new music teacher, Mr. Dar, will be leading that, just as he led our fifth graders in their dare graduation today with their song. They did a beautiful job, and I was so happy for him to have his first successful concert. All of the elementary schools had food drives. Monroe Road and Douglas Road both raised over 1,000 items that went to the Bedford Goodfellows. Now, at Monroe Road Elementary, Ohio, we do Michigan, Ohio State. Ohio State won the food drive, but fortunately, they didn't win the game. But at Douglas Road, Michigan won the food drive and the game. So, they had that. And then at Jackman Road, they raised over 75, or brought in over 7,500 canned food items to donate. So, that was phenomenal. We've got to do some kind of different incentive at Monroe Road. So, they got to throw pies in Cindy Lou Who and the Grinch's face, so I think that might be the key there. So, congratulations to them, and just grateful that our community can benefit from all of those donations from our families. Jackman Road and Douglas Road just had their dare graduations this month, so we were really proud of those students who all wrote their essays and were Spirit Award winners and Judge Michael Whitebird Award winners. Deputy Bill does a wonderful job, so thank you for approving for the liaison officers. I mean, he is just hands-down wonderful. I can't imagine, you know, having more like him. We're very grateful, and we put him to work, so. And then all of our schools, including the junior high and high school, will be having spirit weeks next week. Some of those will be ugly sweaters, pajama days, holiday gear, different holiday hats and antlers, so look for all the fun and festive things coming your way next week. At Douglas Road, they had an Aiden Hutchinson Spirit Day, and they raised over $650 for the Hutchinson Foundation, and they want to congratulate and thank student Tate Moran and his family for coming up with this fantastic idea, and everyone who helped raise money for the tremendous cause. So, that's pretty awesome. That was the first time that's ever happened. And then our food service, and Shelley Ferris, has implemented what's called Mood Boost. You've probably been seeing it on the Facebook page. It's a Chartwell program, and it's going extremely well. Students are enjoying getting to sample different types of food items that are nutritious and good to eat. They're learning about the food groups and how what they eat can change their mood when we eat healthy. And then I just talked to Shelley, and she's looking to start implementing that at Monroe Road, too, so we're very excited and anxiously awaiting that. At Jackman Road, I told you there was a lot. At Jackman Road, they just had their PTO craft show. That was December 7th. It went really well, and all of their booths were sold out. I believe that's a fundraiser for them, too, so good for them. And their second-grade students will be putting on their holiday concert tonight. Right now. The Jackman Road holiday parties are next Thursday. Students will be singing Christmas carols to families in the halls as they leave. So, that sounds amazing. And the Jackman Road Young Fives kindergarten, first and second-grade students mailed letters to Santa at the Bedford Town Hall on Tuesday the 10th. The junior high is currently having their food drive, and they will be delivering, the Bedford Lions will be delivering on this Saturday. They're also having music concerts that are going on now. See the weekly, the dates in the weekly Junior High School Board Report. And the eighth-grade music groups will showcase their talents to the student body at next week. And finally, at the high school, the fall sports ended with some students receiving all-area and even all-state recognition. Congratulations to all of the student athletes. One student, Victoria Gray, was actually selected to the volleyball All-American team. Congratulations to Victoria. Our high school esports team recently won first place in the state finals in Rocket Lounge League. Congratulations to Coach Bradley Field and students Jacob Spoonmore and Ibrahim Salu. This year was the start of the sports officiating class. While the semester and course is not done, we already have several students that are working as officials. The need for officials is very real, and it is great to see our Bedford students filling this need and earning extra money in the process. We finish our choir and orchestra holiday concerts. They just finished those, and next week, on the 17th, their band will be performing at 7:00 PM in their auditorium. And on January 11th, the high school will also be hosting the region for HOSA. There's still a need of judges, so anyone interested in judging the competition and has some medical background is encouraged to contact Principal Kevin Weber or the advisor General Regolato. And that is all I have. It is a busy week. We are all looking forward to some fun festive activities next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Great updates. Appreciate it, Deanna. Okay, we'll move on to Tom.
Thank you, madam. Just want to thank Gina and Dee for their service. I've enjoyed working with both of you. Appreciate your support and enjoy your future endeavors. Want to thank Chrissy and Dr. French. We received our first filter grant. We didn't ask for enough, but we got what we got, and we're going to use it. Working on school zones, school zone signs, work permit, the permit to get those installed. Hopefully, we'll have that done here and get those installed in the spring. Finalizing plans for the interior room numbers and signage, and we salted for the first time this season this morning around 4:30 AM, so hopefully we won't have to do that tomorrow morning, but we'll see. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Tom. Chrissy?
I would like to start by welcoming PJ to the district. I had the pleasure of meeting with her earlier this week. I think she will do wonderful in transportation. I would like to thank Gina and Dee for their service. It's been great working with you in my first year up here. In the business office, we have finalized all of our expenditure reports for the grants that ended September 30th, and I would like to thank Dr. French and his staff for teaching me through this process. It was a very smooth reporting process this year, so I think we've got a good process worked out. And as we finish up our last payroll of the year, we will then begin our calendar year-end procedures in preparing W-2s.
No shortage of fun things. Dr. Schultz?
Just a reminder for parents and students who drive that the roads are starting to get slick. I was also out not quite at 4:30 this morning when Tom woke me up, but I was on the roads at 5:00, and it definitely was not perfect, and I know that some people complained. But I will remind everyone that we only have six days. We will take as many as we need, but we make up those after six. So, we have to be careful when we call late delays or snow days, or emergency days, because as exciting as they are in December, they're not fun in June. So, as long as it is safe to pass through the roads and we can do it safely, we will try to have school. But in the event that it is like this morning, just slow down, take it easy, give yourself lots of space and lots of time when you're leaving the house, and I was sure this morning we were going to be just fine, and luckily, we were. So, the second thing is, again, thank you both for all of your service. I know that, I learned a long time ago that the best gift you can give as a public servant is to leave a place better than when you got here. Bedford is better today than it was prior to Dee's arrival and Gina's arrival, so you've done your job. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and start with the board members, and Megan?
I have nothing else to say except for happy holidays.
Thank you. Amy?
I just want to say that the incentive thing really is real. As a former JRE parent, I do have memories of kind of wiping off the ramen noodle shelves for the food drive so my kid could throw the pie, and I wasn't alone in that aisle. So, but that's always a fun time, and what a great way to serve the community for all of the schools to do it. I have nothing else to add tonight other than happy holidays to everyone in the community.
Thanks, Amy. Amy Bissell?
Welcome, PJ. I'm super happy, and our robotics at the junior high, all three teams crushed it. They went states and won. So, that's awesome. And I just want to say Merry Christmas. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. Gina?
Thanks again, everybody, for all your kind words, you know, to make me blush. One thing that was kind of breaking news is that the holiday party at the junior high tomorrow has been canceled due to low ticket sales. So, if your kid bought a wristband, they can bring it back and get a refund for their $5 or however much it costs tomorrow. Through student council, yes. And that's all. Happy holidays.
Thanks, Gina. Dee?
I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Good luck to the two new board members, and thank you all. Thank you, Dr. Schultz, for your leadership from bringing us out of the hole. It's been an honor to sit on this board. And Tom, the difference in the maintenance is amazing. It really, truly is amazing, and I can't thank you. Chrissy?
It's been real. Thank you all very much, and good luck to everybody. This district is in good hands, and the community is a wonderful place. And PJ, good luck. You'll do fine. You'll do fine. You have a great group of people. Thank you all very much.
All right, I have a couple just other quick updates. I want to thank the food service team for the holiday breakfast spread, and I think that it is, it is, next to graduation, it is my most favorite board activity that we have to do, and they do such a fantastic job. It always looks so beautiful, and I always, it's fun to sit there and watch because the board serves and cleans and does things, and so does the team, sorry, the whole cabinet. But we tell them, you guys just hang out, right? Tom cooked, right? You guys are just here to make it official, but they can't. They're so antsy. They just love to, they're like watching, like, can we refill? Can we do this? And I was like, can you just go eat? Maybe grab something, you know, a coffee? They're just so helpful, and I'm grateful for the work that they do and Chartwells and the support we get to put that on. And this particular breakfast was, I don't remember, there's only one I've missed in the years I've been on the Board. I've never seen as many children at the breakfast as there was this year, so. And I know many of them ran over to Jackman Road Craft Show after the breakfast ended, so I think it's just a win-win all the way around, and if you don't attend it, you haven't had a chance, it's a cool event, and the food is really good. The food is really good. So, thank you again to the food service team, for sure. Oh, yeah, and Jason Sanderson, he, this was his first time coordinating and did a fantastic job. I think it was a record cleanup time we had this year. It was like, just pull the tablecloths off, move all the stuff over and go, and Dr. Schultz, thanks for finding us the social media Santa. I mean, we were worried that the T-Moo Santa would show up, and they did a fantastic job, so. Yes, Mr., and that's the first time we had Mrs. Claus there, so it was, right, they did. I saw him fly in. It was cool. So, anyways, it was really a fun event, well-attended, and a lot of work went into it. I think staff who were there appreciated. I also wanted to just, again, with the transportation contract and welcoming PJ, thank you again for coming to Bedford. Like I said, a little bit bigger, but probably a lot of the same things that you've already seen. Echo the staff bonuses and our ability to have a strong general fund that allows us to do those types of things, and again, testament to this Board and this administration and the work that they have done, so much appreciated. And I hope everyone has a great holiday break. Thank you for all the updates. I don't know how you can't get excited about being a part of this district when you hear all of that stuff going on. You know, I love it. Take 10 minutes, 15 minutes, we'll give you all the time you need, because again, I think that's an opportunity for our community to see, it's not, you know, learning is important, but there are so many other things that happen that introduce learning and concepts, so thank you again for being here. Appreciate it. And I hope everyone has a great holiday, and we'll see you in the new year, so. If there's nothing else, could I get a motion to adjourn?
Madam President, can you adjourn?
Amy? Thank you, is there support?
Support.
Thanks, Megan. Thanks, Dee. All those in favor, aye. Opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you.